It is nine thirty. We will call the meeting of the Medina County Commissioners to order. Do you stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In our prayer for the morning, Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. Steve, could I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Yeah, sure.
Move to approve the minutes of March sixteenth.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hamley?
Yes.
Sweating?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. We will move on to our resolutions. And first up is Andy Conrad, our county engineer, and standing in is Dan Becker. Good morning, Dan.
Morning, guys. I told Bill earlier we should do this outside. It's pretty nice. The first, I have two resolutions day for you to consider. The first resolution is for the Medina County Engineers to advertise and bid the item 223 crack ceiling bid, and then a resolution requiring the necessity to close Pawnee Road between Sanford and Black River School. And then we also have the weekly permits.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hamley?
Yes.
Sweating?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Now you can go out and enjoy the sunshine. Next up, we have Amy Lyon Galvin, our Assistant County Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning, Amy.
I have eleven resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first one is amending the appropriation measure resolution. The second is amending the 2021 appropriations resolution by transferring appropriations. The third resolution is expenditure adjustments for various funds. The fourth resolution is revenue adjustments for various funds. The fifth resolution is creation of the Adult Probation Coronavirus Response Planned Fund and authorizing appropriations. The sixth is creation and acceptance of the Drug Task Force Office of Criminal Justice Services Justice Assistance Grant Fund and authorizing appropriations. The seventh is the creation of Office for Older Adults Home Energy Assistance Program Fund and authorizing appropriations. The eighth resolution is creation of a sheriff's office Health Security Services Fund and authorizing appropriations. The ninth resolution is declaring Medina County motor vehicles as excess property. The tenth resolution is allowing expenses of county officials. And the eleventh resolution are the claims for the week in the amount of $1,371,319.39.
Move to approve the eleven resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion?
We're finally starting to get travel again for some of our employees.
Yes. Yeah, some out of state, too.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Roll call, please.
Hamley?
Yes.
Sweating?
Yes.
Sweating?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Holly Murin, our Human Resources Director. Good morning, Holly.
Good morning. On our personal changes resolution today, we have four rate increases, two at Office for Older Adults, two at County Home, one lateral change at County Home, one position change at County Home, a return from leave and finance, and a paid administrative leave and transit.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hamley?
Yes.
Sweating?
Yes.
Sweating?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
And next, we have Jeremy Cinco, our sanitary engineer. Good morning, Jeremy.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I have one resolution for you today. Authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter into agreement with Jones and Henry Engineers for professional design services to upgrade the existing pumps located in our northern pump station in Sharon Township.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hamley?
Yes.
Sweating?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Short and sweet. Next, we have Kathy Breitenbacher from the economic development, Medina County Economic Development. Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning. Thanks so much for having me. I'm happy to report the CRA meetings are complete. No one's happier about that than our office. For the town...
That was me.
Oh! My, what did I do? So, as you know, there are two different kinds of CRAs. There are pre-94 and post-94. That's when the law changed to change how they're managed. So, our pre-94s for the townships, we have 108 projects that have brought in $235.6 million in investment and created 2,174 jobs. So, obviously, doing its job to help increase our employment. Our post-94, we have $55.7 million in investment, 456 jobs, and those are 16 projects that are currently active. So, lots of activity. I'm happy to report of the companies we spoke with, and we met with 36 actual companies, there was only one that's business is not back up, and they're in healthcare, and they deal with rehabilitation. So, as those elective surgeries come back online, we're expecting to see them go back up. But even the events company that makes booths for events, they're now busier than they've ever been. They retooled their entire business. They got a couple new markets. They did a whole bunch of stuff, and they're hiring again. So, it was a very encouraging set of meetings that could have been very dire, so.
Kathy, how many CRA areas do we have around the county?
Oh, good Lord. So...
I know there's like an area down in Seville.
Yeah, so Seville has one. Brunswick is the entire city. Medina is the entire city. We have...
Hinckley is a corridor.
Yeah, we have Lafayette Township has an area, Liverpool Township, Sharon has two, Hinckley has one, and Wadsworth has nine. And I can tell you all about the Wadsworth ones, because those are the ones I manage. So, yeah, so we have an extensive number. I believe when we counted it up, we had 92 total agreements that we manage on a yearly basis.
Very good.
So, yes. So, we would like to, you know, tell the Ohio House that, yes, we do know what we're doing.
Well, that brings up that bill, House Bill 123.
Yes.
123. But I think it says a lot, too, because part of this, and I just want to thank the members that have served on the housing councils.
Absolutely.
That these are volunteers. They're reviewing these, and they're making sure that the agreements are being enforced. And that's the one thing House Bill 123 doesn't do.
Right.
It doesn't provide any funding for the enforcement portion of it. If anything, it almost eliminates any idea that after an agreement is made, that the companies actually have to comply with what they've agreed to. And this holds their feet to the fire for, well, saying, for paying less in taxes than they're otherwise obligated to do. And I think that's the one failing point of that bill, but it's great how our system works. And obviously, as you point out, we have a lot of experience with it, a lot of benefit. But also, we have a lot of individuals that volunteer their time as citizens to represent us and the auditor and others, and the schools, to oversee and make sure that these things that are complied with.
Kathy knows that I represented Hinckley for several years.
Right, yeah.
And it was not a rubber stamp meeting.
Right.
I mean, we were thorough. Bethany and Kathy gave us all the informations and the stat, and people asked tons of questions, and it was a very thorough process.
And it does take staff time to enforce it.
It does. Absolutely.
And under that bill, there'd be no fees collected.
Yeah. And that's not good either.
So, we basically would, economic development, all the local, basically, the government would have to subsidize, but the people that are not paying the taxes wouldn't pay anything to have that. So, that's...
And when you're getting a million dollars in benefit, you can afford $500 a year.
Yes.
I mean, we're not exorbitant. I was talking to another economic developer. They charge $2,000 a year. So, I mean, as usual, Medina County is very frugal and makes sure that we're taking care of our company's money. And I do would like to thank Joe McNeil, Stacy Tremonti, and Linda Bauer, who sat through the township hearing all day. It was, I will say, on Zoom, it's really short. So, it wasn't quite the all-day that we are used to, but we definitely appreciate your appointees putting their time in. And then all of the townships appoint people, all of the villages, all the cities. So, we do appreciate all the volunteer time.
Yeah.
Great.
All right. So, we have a resolution?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I don't even know what number it is.
It's to approve the minutes and recommendations from the housing councils, Tax and Senate Review Councils, representing Liverpool Township, Granger Township, Hinckley Township, Monville Township, and Sharon Township.
That's the one?
Okay. I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Steve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Hamley?
Yes.
Sweating?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. You're going to stick around, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Much to discuss.
Yes, indeed. Okay, so we're going to move on to our department updates. First department update is from Shannon Ryan, our Transit Director. Good morning, Jen.
I have two resolutions for your consideration today. The first one, approving the acceptance of funding from the Federal Transit Authority for CRSAA Act 2021 program grants. This is a continuation of, they're calling it the CARES Act II. We're accepting a little over $1.7 million for continuing operating costs after we exhaust our previous CARES Act. We'll continue that on. FTA has agreed to allow us to write those grants probably through 2024 estimated. So, it's really going to help us with operating. We'll use that for operating primarily. And the second one is accepting the funding from NOACA for their 5310 program disability, individuals, seniors with disabilities, and about $68,648. This is going to be primarily used for some bus stop construction at the Restore, which is a transfer point in Medina City. And then there'll be another bus stop at the Office for Older Adults. And also, the majority of the money will be going to continue our technology efforts when it comes to the tablets, onboard tablets, and our recording devices of mileage, ridership. It's really going to help us be a lot more efficient. So, that money will be for that. And that's what I have for those two resolutions.
Okay. Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? You can do bus shelters at any other locations around the county?
We are working with Brunswick City right now. We had a preliminary meeting with Grant and Carl and Paul Barnett. Debbie was there. Laura Toth and Amy came along, and we talked about the possibility of some bus stop sign construction in the industrial park area and some of the businesses, and talking about the relocation of some of those things. So, I don't see shelters in the near future, but that funding could go to some of that. I think we're going to establish bus stops and routing first. See what our, in other words, let the path become the guide there, and then work on some bus stop shelters in the future. But initially, it'll be those two right now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Going into our monthly report, looking at our numbers...
Hold on just a second, Jen.
Yes, sir.
Roll call.
Oh, I thought you were roll called.
Hamley?
Yes.
Sweating?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
I thought you were already roll called. Thanks, Bill.
You're good.
Looking at our numbers, we continue to track ridership. We're very hopeful with the centers opening up and the destinations around the county becoming much more open. I will say that we'll continue to see our ridership grow. We are providing a lot of services to medical appointments. We're tracking some folks that are going for the COVID shots. They're not really telling us a lot of time, and because we don't have a one-stop for it, like many other counties, we're tracking it, but we're not asking people, folks are telling us. So, we're tracking that in some way of a trip purpose to measure that a little bit. There's some dollars coming out from the ODOT that's allowing us. We've been offered about $104,000. Not sure how we're going to spend that down. I think it's going to be something we're challenged with over the next couple of months to figure out how to utilize those funds.
And what were the funds designated for? The ODOT money?
It's called immunity transportation is what they're tagging it. What they've done is they've made this money available to allow people to get to destinations around the county with no cost.
For immunization or...
That's correct. Yes, I'm sorry. That's correct. So, I think we can show that we've been using it, but it's tough to track. A lot of folks are traveling already. It may be tough to go back. We're working on trying to track some of those.
I think the larger, like in Cleveland, where they're doing a mass immunization center as well as Columbus.
That's correct.
They're using that money to, because it's free to go to.
Yeah.
And I think they're using that.
Go to this destination.
It's not easy to track, but for us rural systems, it's a little bit more difficult.
So, do we have the ability to advertise and take a bus of people down to the Holstein Center for vaccination purposes?
We've looked at that. I think parking and things like that and how to coordinate that is something we have to look at. Many folks are finding avenues. People are finding ways in the county to get those vaccinations from what we've been hearing from our customers that are calling. We could put some things out in social media to see if we can. I had an idea that we'd take a bus and allow the health department. There is a rap on one of our buses at the health department that we run in Wadsworth, and take that, basically take the show on the road so they could go out and vaccinate on the road. Krista and I probably need to shore up some of those details if that's a possibility. That probably would be something we could draw down fronts from for those costs. But going out of county gets a little tricky.
I know that has always been a difficult issue, any intra-county or...
We can do it, I think, in the interest, right? We can do it. It's just in the interest, is that the most cost-effective way to get our folks around the county? I think there's enough destinations in the county. We just have to coordinate that. Again, we're maintaining cost. Ridership is continuing to be something we work hard to build, you know. I have some good news on top of that. We partnered well. Stephen and I from the maintenance department worked with Paul Barnett from the county of the city of Brunswick. There was a bus lift, a very large bus lift that was up in their old BTA building. They offered it to us for nothing, just moving costs. So, Stephen and I are coordinating that movement. It's going to happen on the 24th and the 25th. It's an asset move. It's a huge benefit. Stephen's excited about it. It'll be used to help us. It will really help maintenance department to be a little bit more efficient for our maintenance of our buses. So, that'll be moved. Good news for there. And...
So, it's going to go in the garage?
It's going to go in the garage. That's correct. Right.
And, okay.
Yeah. So, that's a really good thing. They always need all the tools they can get, and it's in pretty good shape. So, the last thing I have is we were, I was very thankful to Krista and told her. We communicated about putting something in their newsletter, the commissioners newsletter, the health commissioners newsletter. We were mentioned in there about being, I wanted to make sure people knew that we were safe to ride, and we could take people to all different destinations, especially the health department if they needed. So, she was nice enough to mention us in there.
Excellent.
So, we're making some great partners and continuing to work through all the challenges of getting the service complete for everybody in the county where they want to go.
Good deal. Very good.
Okay.
Questions? All right. Thank you, Jen. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is Debbie Kylie from Job and Family Services. Good morning, Debbie.
Good morning. I have two resolutions for your consideration first and foremost. The one is a cooperation between Medina County Child Support Enforcement Agency and the Medina County Clerk of Courts. This is for 4D child support services effective January 1st through December 31st, 2021. And the other is an equal agreement between Medina County Child Support Enforcement and the County Prosecutor's Office, again, for 4D services for the same time period, January 1st through January, or sorry, December 31st, 2021.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hamley?
Yes.
Sweating?
Yes.
Yes.
And has become my custom. I will do division updates piece by piece. So, the Public Assistance Division, last month, one of my updates was that President Biden had opened up the marketplace February 15th through May 15th to offer continued applications for private insurance. But when an individual makes that application and they give a statement of income, if it's under the threshold for Medicaid, we automatically get a referral. So, we weren't really sure what that impact was going to be. When I pulled numbers from the time that it opened, I actually went back to February 1st. To today's date, we've received 160 applications just through the marketplace. So, it's not an exorbitant number. We can certainly handle that. It's actually far less than I feared it might be. Over that same time period last year, when the marketplace wasn't open, we received 109. So, it's not that much more. The division also continues, I think I reported last month, that the SNAP program, the State of Ohio mandates that agencies, if an application reaches 30 days, it needs to be approved on that 30th day to be considered timely. And that the rate set by the State of Ohio is 95%. The division continues to be at 100%. So, dare I say, we are perfect. Case loads remain pretty static. We have about 9,000 individuals in receipt of food assistance, the SNAP program, about 480 individuals, and that's, it's families, but within that family, there's 480. So, it's a count of total individuals in receipt of cash assistance. And then our Medicaid recipients for the month of February, we're at about approximately 23,000 individuals plus.
So, there's 23,000 people in Medina County that are on Medicaid?
And that includes children.
Yes, includes children, their parents, and then any single adults. As I had mentioned last month, moving on to child protective, the governor has authorized that kinship support payment program. It's going to, the state will cover for the first six to nine months respectively, a per diem rate of $10.20 for children that are in kinship care. After that, those families have the opportunity to become licensed as foster parents. We sent out letters to those family members asking if they were interested in being licensed, and we haven't had actually any response. I think we had one family note that they might be interested in receiving a licensure. So...
The licensure difference between the $10 and the licensure amount, it's significant, right?
It is. It's 30. So, as the state will pay unlicensed, it's $10.20 to those that have children that are related to them in their care. If they become licensed, it increases to $35.
That's significant.
Mm-hmm. And I don't know that the licensure is that difficult. So, I'm not sure what the apprehension is, and it might just be that they have the children in their care, and that's their main goal, is to provide for the children. So, obviously, this is subject to change. I'm sure it's new information to these families, so they might read the letter and set it aside. And so, I'll keep you posted on that, as if interest starts to increase, we'll measure it at that point in time.
So, Debbie, where does the funding come for that?
So, the $10.20 will be covered by the state. Once it becomes the $35 per diem, it is partly covered by the 4E money. We can also cover it by a state child protective allocation, and then the balance is by most likely our levy funds.
Okay.
Do we offer the certification classes ourselves, or do they have to go elsewhere?
Both. So, they can do it through a private agency, but we can also do it locally, too. I would hope that the families would entrust us to do the licensure, because it's far more convenient. A lot of it now is being held online, too. Even as things are opening and training facilities are opening, they're still offering it virtually. The numbers, I don't think they're any different from a child protective perspective of what I shared last month. We currently have 17 children in relative care of the total 83 that we have currently involved with us. 49 of those children are in foster care, non-relative, and then the balance, I think it's, there's some mixture in here with children in foster care and non-relative, but the balance are in residential or treatment group homes, not in any sort of family setting. The child support division, their collections were made on target for February 2021. The agency collected 2.3 million in support payments. They, too, are above the state standard for total collections. The state mandates that we be at 90%. Currently, they're at over 97%. They're 97.48 when I think I looked. So, their collections are above the state standard. I continue to meet, the agency as a whole, I continue to meet with each division, child protective, child support, and then the public assistance division, asking those divisions, what can we do more of, what can we do less of. Child protective and public assistance, they're right now working on some internal procedures, policy and procedure letters, getting things in writing, so staff know what's expected of them and when it's expected of them. And I have joked, but I'm somewhat serious, is that if someone, if it's not in writing, and that process is designated to that one person, and that one person gets hit by a bus tomorrow, I want someone else to be able to pick up that policy and be able to apply it, and we don't miss a beat, rather than we're all talking and wondering, what was it that Steve did? Did he do it twice a week or once a month? Or, so they're working towards that goal. Child support, I've actually asked that division to start reviewing each of the job descriptions that they have under them. I don't know how long it's been that they've done that, but when I met with them, I expressed my desire that it's good for us to look under the hood, just like you would your car, to make sure it's running efficiently and effectively. I wanted them to do the same thing. So, I've charged management with going back to their teams and back to their desks and looking at each one of those job descriptions and getting very micro in it about what they do and when they do it and how often they do it, so that we can look at that entire system and see, is there room for improvement, or are we doing absolutely as good as we possibly can? So, that work continues. That is all I have for you.
Very good. All right. Thank you, Debbie.
Sure, thank you.
We appreciate it.
Have a great day.
Next, we have Christina Fazio from EMA.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. So, I'm looking forward to doing this quarterly. This will be a good way to let everybody know what EMA is doing, even though we have commissioners that sit on our EMA board. So, I always tend to get lost in details of some of the stuff that we're doing. So, to prevent me from doing that, I created this short outline. And then if you guys have questions about things, of course, and I'll bring new things to you the next time that I come. So, what I wanted to start with was providing a grant summary. What I attempted to do, and we put this together quite some time ago, and we're still missing some dates. You can see in yellow from very early on, 1999 through 2003. That was back in the day when we kept records on floppy disks, and finding those floppy disks are a little challenging. Getting that information from the state is challenging, too, because records retention doesn't require them to keep stuff that goes 20 years back. We do have some records that are over at the highway engineer where mobile command was stored. They were water damaged. So, I think at some point, we'll use a respirator, and I'll go through. And there's some black mold that's through the boxes, but I'm pretty desperate to find these numbers so that we can have a complete chart of the last 21 years. But missing 1999 through 2003, those Homeland Security dollars early on, right after 9/11 happened, interestingly enough, 9/11 being, oh, and I see a typo in there, 2011, should be 2001. So, 2001 being 9/11, they actually went back to Department of Homeland Security. We had our very first Homeland Security grant, oddly enough, was dated 99. So, those first few years, you can see in 2004, $558,000. And then you can see how it's been reduced over the course of time. But those initial years, we received a significant amount of money. That's part of the reason why I want to try and grab those dollars, because it'll end up greatly increasing our total that you see down in that pink box. But, so I wanted to give the commissioners an idea of, over the years, only having a staff of two and/or three people at a time, that emergency management brought in a significant amount of money. I'm guessing that to be able to find those early totals, probably will have that total amount be around $12,000. It's a lot of money that comes in for the benefit of countywide public safety.
12 million.
12 million. Would I say 12,000?
1,000.
12 million.
A thousand times that amount.
A thousand times that amount. Thank you. So, I don't know what questions might arise from this, but in the future, as you look through this, if anything strikes you, just feel free to ask. Probably one of the more significant, well, it is the more significant amount, if you look over with the miscellaneous and then the FMA, the flood mitigation assistance, through 2000 to 2009, we brought in approximately 2.3 million to buy out 24 properties in Glory Glen's and Clayton Heights for the repetitive flood program. So, we demoed 24 homes in order to get those families into a safer area, not flood-prone property anymore. So, we don't have any calls. After those buyouts took place, we have not received a single call from any resident that has any kind of water coming into their house. So, you get a call on occasion that their houses are surrounded by water. So, FEMA is okay if their house is surrounded by a moat. They're just not okay when the water comes into your living area. So, that's a huge mitigation. So that's a huge mitigation project. And actually, all these years later, that is still one of, and remains, one of the largest state mitigation projects to date.
Christina, can I ask you a question? So under the state capital bond and the miscellaneous, there's 400,000 and 100,000 from NEXUS. I know you're earmarking that for a building. Since Lafayette donated the building, or a building in Lafayette Township, has that changed? Are you still looking for a building?
No.
What are you going to do with that 400, 500?
Oh, we'll use it. So probably what's going to, well, not probably, what will happen with the Chippewa Building on Heatherhedge, it's only 4,400 square feet. So a few years ago, we had a company out of Cleveland put together for us when we were doing, still moving forward with the idea of building new. Weber Murphy Fox put together a concept drawing for us, and part of that concept drawing was them coming, inventorying and evaluating all of our rolling stock. And from there, they came up with the number of 30,000 square feet. So we need a building that is minimally, so this isn't office space, training rooms, anything other than just housing all of our equipment under one roof. We would need a building that's 30,000 square feet to put all of our trucks and trailers in. You know, we have some towable generators, that kind of stuff. So the idea that we have Chippewa, fantastic. We were grateful to have had the donation, but it's still only a 4,400 square foot building. So the first $400,000, and we might end up tapping into the second 400,000, we're going to work on putting a second floor on that Chippewa building to increase that square footage to account for a training room, because we still don't have a place to be able to do training. So that 400,000 will be still utilized at Chippewa. So through this process, what we thought might be a good idea, there's a few ways that you can do this. The idea of us having one big building, as great as that could be, you still have the chance of some inclement weather pattern coming through. I don't like to say it out loud, because I don't like putting it out in the universe, but should a funnel cloud come out of the sky and wipe out your one building, it's taking away all of your response equipment. So that has its pitfalls. So with the idea of Chippewa Fire, what we're going to maybe start pursuing is satellite locations, then. So if you have inclement weather come through, impact one of your buildings, it's not taking away your entire fleet of response equipment. So that second 400,000, there's something in the works that hopefully in the next few months, I'll be able to bring to you that's equally exciting to Chippewa Fire, that will allow us a second satellite office, then, to house additional equipment. So all that money's going to be spent, there's no question.
So the restrictions on that, that you'll have to spend it by the end of next year, is it?
The first 400,000 had, I filed for a grant extension when COVID started, and then should we have to extend the second 400,000, I'll just file for another grant extension.
Right, and you'll have to work, obviously, with Representative Keg, Representative Ray, as well as Senator Romancheck, to make sure it gets included in that capital.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, got it, all right.
When you do the remodel and put the second floor in for training, will you include offices for yourself, or will that not be your office?
It will be, there will be rooms. If we end up having to put a table with bays, we'll do that, because we're not able to use that funding for offices.
Interesting, okay.
Per se. It's a training facility. So, yeah, but we won't send a dollar back, or we won't not use a dollar. We use all of our money that anybody spends. One of the good things about the NEXUS money is that as we keep moving forward with improving the Chippewa location, that NEXUS money will allow us to do some remodel that isn't covered under the capital bond. So fencing, just to improve, just even the aesthetics of, you know, we needed to pay the lot. So that NEXUS money is good fallback money for those things that that grant funding won't be able to cover. Any more questions on that? No? So through COVID response, I think everybody is aware that emergency managements, either across the state, unless it's coordinated differently, typically, emergency managements in every county are the receiver of the state-provided or FEMA-provided PPE. So it's been that case for us here in Medina County, and we've been utilizing the Montville Service Garage for a lot of the PPE that initially came in. And then we ended up putting overflow of that PPE to Chippewa Fire. So we've been using Chippewa Fire long before the actual transfer of the property took place. So we have received, since the start of COVID, 43 deliveries, and they're not small deliveries, they're the kind of deliveries that come on a semi-trucker, tractor-trailer setup. So CARES funding helped us purchase the vehicle for movement of that PPE internally in the county, and then we were able to purchase the tow motor through CARES funding, too, to allow for easier movement of these palleted items. So 43 deliveries is a pretty significant amount of free PPE in order to benefit the county. So that second sheet that you see, the summary sheet, is our totals to date. So we've received the 1,674,75,000 items, and then, you know, we broke it down to even donated items, distributed items. Mission requests that we've received internally in the county is 303. That means 303, 130 entities have requested PPE items, and we filled 303 mission requests. So that's long-term care facilities, it could be fire departments, police departments, the communities, town halls to be able to carry on with their in-person meetings, county home. So that's a pretty significant amount, I would say. But I don't know that too many other counties are tracking their PPE to this degree, but Ben and Matt in the office love doing this kind of stuff, so gotta love them, right? So if you look at the table that shows SNS, OEMA, and ODH, I gave the little legend, because nobody knows what the acronyms are, but of these items, the items that were received came from those three different sources: Strategic National Stockpile, Ohio EMA, and then a lot of that is the FEMA stuff, and then the Ohio Department of Health. Any questions on that? So then to move on to All Hazards, Commissioner Hudson asked that early question. One of the things that has been an issue with residents down at Chippewa is they have an outdoor early warning siren. We have 34 outdoor early warning sirens in the county. They're all individually owned by the communities. A lot of them, we helped to purchase through some grant funding with 50/50 grant reimbursement. That particular outdoor early warning siren that's at Chippewa, the residents love that siren. They look forward to it, they count in it going off, they know that that first Saturday noon test, they anticipate it. When it doesn't work, they want to know why. And that particular siren, the sirens that are in Lafayette are one-way sirens, which means that when the sheriff's office sets off a tone, it goes out to the siren, but it doesn't have the ability to communicate back that the alarm was successful, or that the siren was set off successfully. But that particular siren is so old, it was actually the original siren to let the local firefighters know that they needed to come to the station for a fire. That's how old that siren is. So the idea that it didn't work kind of makes sense to a lot of us, because it's that old, it's that antiquated. Super cool, I mean, it's this awesome antique. If we ever end up taking it down, we're going to do something with it, we'll put it in the firehouse or our All Hazard Station, because it's just that neat-looking. However, they still want it to be functional. So it's been an issue, it's been challenging for the township to get it working. But within a week of the commissioners receiving and that formal transfer taking place, we made it operational and worked that first Saturday. Residents are super happy about it. So some of the things that I look forward to, and a lot of our team looks forward to, is being able to integrate into the neighborhood, to be able to open up the bays and have people walk their dogs down the sidewalk, and they know your name, and we know their name, and you invite them in. That's kind of what we envisioned that Chippewa station to be, that it will be neighborhood-friendly. And this right here, I think, was a big jump forward to show the residents that we want to be part of what you're doing here, and we're here to serve the residents. So it may seem like a small thing, but to them, it was huge, and it meant something to them. So then when I talk about the Montville Service Garage having PPE, what I hoped to be able to bring to you today was photos to show you the quantity of PPE that's also stored at Chippewa, but we're still in the middle of just remodeling. They have two new back bays that likely won't be touched when we have a contractor do the second floor remodel. But hopefully, my next visit to you guys, I will be able to show you a picture, and you can see the quantity of PPE that we have housed there. It's really pretty incredible. And we received a donation a number of months ago from a company out of Worcester for brand-new pallet racking. And pallet racking is very expensive, but he gave us enough to be able to store the quantity of PPE that we have at Chippewa. It was really a pretty amazing donation that he made to us, so you'll see it organized for the next time that I come visit you. The vehicles and the equipment that are there, Mobile Command is now there, we have Sharon Township Fire donated a squad to us, so that's there. We have a couple other vehicles that are housed there, along with the PPE. So that 4,400 square feet of downstairs floor space is full. We actually have a couple, a gooseneck trailer and another vehicle that have to stay parked outside right now. So it didn't take very long to fill up that 4,400 square feet. And then I already talked about the building remodel for grants, if you had any other questions about that.
You talked about going up. Do you have enough of a footprint to?
Go out?
Out?
No, I don't think that we do. So the...
You're talking about Chippewa?
Chippewa, yeah. And we talked about it at board meeting, to be able to expand, because on the east side is Lot Line, so there's a house right there. And then the west side, there's some underground piping, and we talked about that at board meeting, not knowing if we can build over that or not. But if we do expand into the parking lot, then when we do outside training, then you're going to be limited with your outside square footage to be able to do training, and house enough even personal vehicles when you're doing training. So it's a challenge to know what's the right thing to do with that small lot size. So you just do the best you can, right? So that's why we're going to go up, as opposed to not going out. So we sprawl out, then we're losing, you know, again, some space that we need for other things, so. Other than that, if nobody has any questions, don't forget that tomorrow's our outdoor early warning, 9:50. When people hear sirens going off, it's Severe Weather Awareness Week.
We're doing a fire drill, right? Or not a fire drill, tornado drill, right?
Yeah. And this marks that 9:50, if anybody isn't aware, that that 9:50 timeframe is when the Xenia tornadoes hit many, many years ago, and very badly impacted Xenia residents down there, so.
Christine, how many incidents has EMA responded to in the last few months?
I can bring that report to you, that's a good, I see, that's a good report.
Yeah, I mean, there were a couple of ICE rescues, if I remember right.
I'm going to write down response to varying incidents for next time. So we go to ICE, we go to any call, any All Hazards call. So if it's not me directly, the last call that we went out was child abduction. So I think it was in Seville. The child abduction response team was called to find that 30-some-year-old gentleman that had walked away, and Mobile Command went out to that. And we assist with Mobile Command primarily for calls that are not our All Hazards team response, but EMA always has a presence, whether it's for the drone team, the water team, all of the team call-outs, EMA has a presence in some way, background. I mean, that's what EMA does, it's a background support entity. So the amount of calls that we've gone out on this year, I'm going to guess since the start of the year, might be six. So, yeah, I'll bring you those numbers for the next time, if it's something that you guys are interested in. And then maybe training numbers, too. I think that it would be good to report out how many team members we have on each of the disciplines, just so that the communities are aware of what responses that we have, the ability to accomplish structural collapse, high-angle rope rescue, those sorts of things. I'll bring that information to you.
Sure, that'd be great.
Yep.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. We have one liquor permit filing. It is a request from Coal Enterprises LLC, 965 March Road, Unit C, Brunswick, Ohio. It is for a Class D1, D2, D3, D6, and we're not going to have a hearing, we just need to read this into the record. Moving on into discussion session. Steve, you have anything this morning?
No, I know we're going to talk about the Nowaka Long Range Transportation.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say, one of our previous mayors of Seville lost his wife this week, Sue Simmons, and she was a wonderful, wonderful woman, and our prayers go out to their family.
Indeed.
Yes. Laura, do you want to come in?
I wanted to go over in a little more detail with the board our reopening and what that's going to, I'm sorry.
Our reopening and what that's going to look like in the next few weeks. So I have a couple of, this is a packet, so if you could just pass that along. So we are on target to quote-unquote reopen on April 12th. Reopening will not be meaning opening the doors, and people will be able to come in and get their lunch and their coffee, and sit and shoot the breeze, and things that they have done previously. We will work up to that, but that's not what it'll look like on April 12th. So I want to go over three different aspects of what we need to do to get reopened. The first is testing. There's an order from the Ohio Department of Health that all staff has to be tested every two weeks to have a senior center open, and also, some participants, if they are symptomatic or if they are at high risk, and we want to get them tested. So as I reported at the last meeting I was at, we have an agreement with Avenue at Medina, they're going to perform rapid tests. These are state-approved tests, and I have given you a copy of the testing policy and procedure that I wrote, and I have a consent that's currently with the civil prosecutor to make sure it's okay for my staff to sign a consent to be tested. There is no choice. It's kind of a weird order. The test is mandatory, so if a staff refuses to be tested, they will not be working. I have no, there's no, it doesn't matter if you're vaccinated, it doesn't matter if you have had COVID, every person gets tested every two weeks as that order is written. I'm very hopeful, because just last week, they amended the order for nursing homes, a little loosening of the regulations and let people have longer visitations. People who have been vaccinated don't have, staff who have been vaccinated in nursing facilities don't have to get tested as often, they still have to get tested. So I'm hopeful in the next few weeks that there'll be a little loosening of these testing requirements. I believe it's a huge ask for senior centers and for our staff. I do have everyone on board, I've talked about it relentlessly, I think, with my staff. This is the way things have to be. We're having another meeting on April 2nd, and then we will begin the testing on April 9th. So that's the testing aspect of our reopening.
So Laura, what's the purpose of testing someone who's been vaccinated?
All I can say is that the test order was written in October, before people were getting vaccinated, and it just hasn't been amended. There is a period between, if you aren't, I'm not a doctor, I don't even play one on TV, no. There is a period between the first and second vaccination where you could get exposed and I believe get COVID, and then there's a period after, if you're on a two dose, yeah. get COVID. And then there's a period after, if you're on a two, uh, dose, yeah, the, the two weeks after. So after that, time's expired. I, I am not sure, except that the order hasn't been amended. So we have our-
So you're following orders?
We're following, you're following orders.
Fair enough.
We can be flexible enough, and once that changes, we can instantly-
Correct.
Change the proceed, the policy and procedure.
That is correct, absolutely. The second prong of, of the approach is the physicality of the center. So we only have our dining room and craft room open to activities and our lobby area where the billiard tables are. That's a very large area, and we will have only four people at a time. Yeah, very popular, absolutely. We also had to create what's called an isolation room. So if we test somebody and they're positive, or we find out they have an exposure, or they're symptomatic, they would put into an isolation room, just so they can call and get a ride somewhere for people to be in the midst of getting a positive test and getting them set up either to work from home, or if it's a client, getting them set up for transport if they didn't drive themselves. Then we have sanitation policies and procedures. We have a system for knowing which tables are sanitized, which are not. And we have instructions on how to sanitize table for staff and for people utilizing each activity room. And also, temperature checks will be required. So that's kind of the physicality of our center, we're able to do it. And the third is activities and how they will work. We have a new system, it's kind of convenient. We got it, actually, I think we had closed by the time we got it. It's called Senior Space. And each, I, I think I've talked about it before, each participant gets a fob, like your Bueller's card, your Giant Eagle card, or whatever. And when they come in, they scan in and say what activities they're going to do. That is a nice, minimal-touch kind of check-in system that we have. People can sign up online. They have to get an invitation from us, but then they can sign up, have a login, an account, sign up for activities. If they, they do not have access to email or online, they will call in and we'll get them registered for the class. So after somebody has registered, that's going to take a bit of time, too, to get everybody their fobs and, but we'll do it, we'll get through it. Then the day before people come in for activities, a volunteer has to call them with a health check for every activity, every day, per state order. So we have that set up. That took a little while to get set up, too. But we have it going. So we have a system for people to get called. Also, we'll be offering hybrid activities. I gave you a schedule of the in-person activities, which are four days a week. And then underneath that is a more colorful, it is a more colorful calendar, of all of our Zoom activities, which are five days a week. So we're going to be doing both in-person and hybrid activities for the foreseeable future. We have an outdoor space, we have a beautiful courtyard. I'm asking maintenance to move picnic tables off half of the courtyard, so we can have exercise out there and Tai Chi and yoga and things like that. When it's nice, people can go outside. I think that would be a good use of that space. And then also, activities are spaced out, so there's enough airing out of the activity rooms between things that we have going on. The final two things, masks and social distancing are mandatory per the order. Again, vaccinated two weeks, you wear, you wear your mask. And we're following the gym regulations for exercise classes, that's again in the order. But that means when somebody's actively exercising, they don't have to have their mask on. That has followed through, and I don't think there's any known incidents where that's been a problem. People, there won't be any food at our facility at this time, at this opening, except, of course, our home deliveries. Nothing to be eaten within the facility. People are allowed personal beverages, coffee, water. We are county, so no, nothing crazy. Is there any questions?
The draft letter you have, I know, I think you have a typo-
Oh, okay.
Underneath the bullets, say, for any positive tests. The first paragraph below that says anyone testing negative is not permitted to work.
And it should be positive.
Don't you mean positive? Yeah, okay, thank you.
I just exude positivity. I like the word positive. Not in that sense, though.
Just a little typo, that's it.
All right, thanks. Thanks for giving me just a couple minutes. There's a lot of details that go into this, and I just wanted to keep you guys apprised of what was going on.
Well, thanks for giving us an update. It'd be nice to have things coming back online and getting back to a sense of normalcy-
Yes.
Whatever that is nowadays.
Thank you for working, working this out. Yeah.
I know, it's a lot of hoops to jump through, but that's okay. And we're very flexible as, as orders may change. The next time I'm scheduled to report will be the day after we open, so hopefully everything will be smooth sailing.
Good deal.
Thank you so much.
Best of luck.
Have a great day.
Done?
Christina?
Christina?
Through the power of text messaging, I was corrected that it's not six responses to date.
Christine, if you're going to, you have to come back to the microphone so that we can-
If Ben and Matt are still watching, you're going to laugh. Through the power of text message, messaging, I was corrected, it's not six incidents this year, it's 14.
Oh, very good.
14. That's a big difference. So, thank you.
All right, thanks, Christina. Scott, do you have anything? Jeremy?
Yeah, I got a couple things. Some exciting things in the world of water and sanitary sewer. Over on Clover Cliff, between Rock Ridge and Beachside Boulevard, the Chippewa Lake Village is doing a road improvement project. So we do have some aging water mains over there. So as part of their project, we're going to work with them and replace the water main, the water connections to the right-of-way, and the sanitary sewers under the road. This way, hopefully, there wouldn't be, there won't be any future issues with our utilities under their new road. So-
I know you do when you have projects like that, replacement. Do you also have a schedule in your budget of just replacement for aging miles?
We do set aside some money for projects like this that do pop up in the event that they do. So, and it looks, you know, Chippewa does a yearly project, so we're going to start allocating some funds off to the side for each, each budget, just for these types of projects. So we can tackle these replacements as they replace their roads. So-
Well, it's, it's good to work with the local community, because the last thing they want is to put their new road in-
Mm-hmm.
And then to have you come along a year later and tear it up and-
Yeah, that just actually-
Put a new water line or sanitary line in. So it's, I appreciate the fact that you're working with the communities to-
Okay, great.
Plan those sorts of things.
The other thing, our north pump station in Sharon Township, we need to add a couple pumps. We had, with that Jones and Henry resolution earlier, so next week, we'll be looking to, you know, advertise, do a resolution next week for advertisement, giving authorization to do that. We're probably looking in mid-April to get that bid out, so. And then also, we've been, I've been working with HR Gray, they do, they've rewrote our general conditions on our spec book, and they've also wrote our technical specifications. But they're going to look at rewriting our rules and regs. It's just long overdue. Kind of as, as we've encountered situations, we would always add to it. But, you know, there's just repetition in it, and just to clean it all up and make it read a lot, and, you know, just secure the, our rules and regs a little bit better. So-
They'll be, they'll be focusing also on the, on the pre-treatment requirements, like for industry where we've-
We do have, yeah, we work, we have our pre-treatment program-
Right.
And we work directly with the EPA on that section, so we, we shouldn't have too much to, to update on that unless the, you know, they see something in there. But they'll take a look at it.
They'll take a look at it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right.
So, and that's all I have.
Jeremy, how's the building going? Construction down to recycle site?
Good. Most of the demo is done. They just took the roof off, or we're working on roof repairs this past, at the end of last week and into this week. And it appears that we need some new roof drains in there. And also, the elevator that is scheduled to be installed at the building, they need to increase, increase the amperage on the elevator. Therefore, that also needs to have some work done on the electric panel. So I think that totaled about 3,500 extra bucks. So-
How'd the scale repair go?
Great. So we are back in business on that. And we're working with, we're going to work on getting a bid out for that to, to replace those scales this year at some point. So we'll target the summer for that bid. So-
Excellent. And do we have a solid waste policy committee meeting scheduled?
I think we're going to look for, yeah, we're going to shoot for April.
Okay.
So we'll start work, getting the dates worked out with Ron and all that up. So-
Good deal.
Perfect. Well, thank you.
Jeremy?
Thank you.
Denise, did you have something? Oh, you're here? Okay. All right, Kathy. Let's talk about the long-range transportation plan.
That sounds like fun.
Yes, doesn't it?
I asked Shannon to also come as well, so-
Sure, sure. Do you want to come up to the- So Nowaka has created and updates a long-range transportation, transportation plan that is supposed to look, you know, 20 to 30 years out into the future and give guidance on how to prioritize and plan for, for projects long-term. And we, we got the plan, and it is, I would, I would say, my opinion, it is very Cuyahoga County-centric.
Yes, it is, yeah.
It focuses on a lot of areas in Cuyahoga County, principally in Cuyahoga County, to the exclusion of, of Medina County in particular. And has a couple projects, like a rail project coming down into Medina County, that we question whether there will ever be a-
We examined that in the 90s and gave up on it, just because of the right-aways and so forth. So it's like, every 20 years, they keep revisiting the same-
Yes, yes.
Same thing.
So Bethany, Bethany Detler from Medina County, this is Kathy, not Bethany, but Bethany-
We're interchangeable, you know?
Bethany drafted a letter, which I have shared with, with both of you.
Very detailed.
It is, it is very detailed. Andy Conrad spent a lot of time looking at the plan as well.
And Denise.
And Denise Testa. And, and I mean, Shannon even looked at it and gave some feedback on it. So Kathy, why don't you talk about the letter itself, if you would, and we'll go on from there.
Well, and anecdotally, having grown up in Cuyahoga County, if the rapid transit were used heavily, I would say train had an opportunity, but nobody uses it. You know, ridership isn't up. So as far as trains go, I don't know that we're geographically situated to make that make sense. But yes, so, you know, we did try and go through each of the individual points. We analyzed each of the scenarios that were presented and walked through those in detail. We do feel very strongly, and I think it's summarized well at the bottom of page one, no, this really veers Nowaka away from the core purpose of planning for transportation and mobility. They're really focused on, on job growth, which is great to some degree, because right now, we don't have the population to fill the jobs that we have open. So we have to be very smart about our job growth and understand where it's going to happen. And if you look, the part that, that really always just makes us crazy is on page three, with the pictures of the job hubs. So this is a concept that has been floated for a number of years. The idea is, if you bring business to where the people are, and you invest in the infrastructure that already exists, and you, you build those areas up, that it's going to make things more efficient, more effective, and work better. The reality is, even if you play the model out, and you say, okay, this worked, right? We put our companies here, we have our people living near the company, which, even if you ignore the discussion of who wants to live near the businesses, when that company then needs to expand, as many of our manufacturers often do, where are they going to expand? Well, they're going to buy the houses of the people that work there. So, you know, you created the exact same problem in reverse. And so I, I still have never gotten my head around the whole job hubs concept. And as you'll note, they only put out regional job hubs in Cuyahoga County. So their quote-unquote collar counties are completely ignored in this process.
We can't be the only county that's upset about this.
We are not.
No.
And, and the other thing, and, and when you look at the population projections-
That's the other place.
Yeah. It, it had basically all the population growing in Cuyahoga County, and, and it's, it's to the contrary. Cuyahoga County's been losing population for several years, and Medina County has been gaining.
Yes.
So their, their fundamental assumptions seem to be incorrect.
And we can't find anywhere that there's a projection of 200,000 growth net, because that's the other piece. I mean, you know, people move and they leave the area, so it's crazy. Colleen, you're absolutely right. I did receive a call from our friend in Lorain County that does economic development, because we've talked about Nowaka issues in the past. And he asked, you know, how we were feeling. I did let him know we were going to have this conversation, and he was hoping we would share the letter. If, if it's something that you agree to, and, and we determine that it's going to be signed, he would like to see it.
Sure.
And I think that that would be an excellent next step, is to share it with our counterparts in the other counties. Because I do think, you know, this is significantly ignoring four of their five counties.
And I think, well, I know, Geogga County has had concerns for many, many years. And I think likewise, the other counties are now seeing, obviously, this has moved in a significant direction. I, I agree totally, it's Cuyahoga-centric. The one issue I have, and Shannon and I were on the, they've been doing these work groups for this, with various groups. They did the Transit Directors last Thursday, where I was on it. And they started talking about moving people close to the transit hubs, moving people. What they meant is people moving there and residing there, and not talking about consumer choice, or people's choice of where they live.
Yeah.
And that's one of the fundamental issues I have with this, is there, we, people are voting with their feet.
Right.
And we're ignoring that freedom of ability to move. And I know Andy Conrad has made those comments, and I know others in the past likewise. And that is one of the, the biggest issues, is we're trying to create, they're trying to take money, public money, and use it in, in such a way as to actually inhibit people, inhibit their freedoms, their ability to move-
Yeah.
And decide where they want to live. And if, if 30 minutes or an hour is too far, too far to go to work, then you make the decision accordingly. I used to have, actually, my brother used to live in Pennsylvania and, and drove to NASA, two hours, two hours a day, for, for about a number of years. But then he, he got his job in Pennsylvania, where he wanted to live. And so that, that's great, and people do that. But for us to actually create a plan that moved, that intentionally prioritize people moving into those, these areas, these job hubs and what they're creating, is, is just absolutely wrong. And, and to the detriment of, I'll just say, of people that live in the outside counties and people having a choice of being able to live where they want to live and work where they want to work.
Right.
One, and Andy was involved in the drafting of this letter very heavily.
Yes.
He has a training class this morning, so he wasn't able to join us, but he had wanted to be here. And then Denise was a big part of writing it as well. So, you know, we have multiple departments that are very concerned.
The point of this organization, correct me if I'm wrong, is to have a regional focus and regional ideas and regional future. And this certainly doesn't seem like it's-
Was coordinate federal, largely federal, federal funding. And the use of the, many years ago, a couple decades ago, actually, all federal grants, it was called a coordinating agency, because it coordinated all federal grants. That was the intention created in the 60s and 70s. And why Medina County ended up joining that instead of AMATS. There was a choice, actually, Portage and Summit were part of it. They broke off, and then I think Don Simmons and Chuck Clark were all members, and they decided, no, we want to go with Nowaka. But they coordinated federal grants. But the intention of the organization is for transportation. Now, of course, water and air quality have been added on, but to coordinate that. But this plan is the first one to start using, actually fundamentally looking at land use planning. And that, I think, is the problem.
And very heavily favoring one community.
And this is, and we've had to face this, I hadn't been on the board for 18 years that I was here, and been president three times. Every time we co-in to a transportation plan, that is what Cuyahoga County has always wanted, is to get in charge of the land use planning. And we have held very firm in our county, this is about home rule. This is about our townships and our community deciding what they want their community to look like, not a regional planning organization such as Nowaka.
So you, you have the letter?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Oh, yeah.
So if we're all good with it, we'll go ahead and, and Kathy, we have several signatory organizations listed on here. I know Andy's in, in favor of it.
Absolutely.
And Denise is in favor of it. But what about EDC? Is that something that's going to have to be approved by the board?
Oh, no. We are very much in favor of this. This, this process has been ongoing. And one of the early surveys that came out was very slanted. And I was attending a meeting and got very upset, and came in the next day and drafted the email to go out and, and the email to go to the board. And Bethany got very fired up. And so the two of us have been fired up about this for a long time now. And the board is well aware of our concerns. And actually, Medina County had more survey responses than the other three counties put together, and just like 20 people under Cuyahoga County when they reviewed the results. So we got everybody fired up.
Does Grace Glushy have any heads up about our unhappiness on this?
We have talked to Grace for a number of years now about the job hubs issue. So she is well aware that we do not appreciate, and, and even in Medina County, if you identify quote-unquote job hubs, I mean, this, this has been floating around forever. And it doesn't work, you know, because people get to choose where they want to work. So, you know, even Westfield Center was a company town, right? I mean, at one point, if you worked at Westfield, you lived in Westfield Center. What a beautiful place to live. Who doesn't want to live there? And they stopped, right? That requirement's no longer the case. That requirement's no longer the case, because it doesn't work. So these concepts are not good. So we've been talking to Grace a long time, and even last week, Bethany sent her a question about this report, and the answer, the answer was very clear that what she put out is what she's standing behind.
And as I understand the timing, correct me if I'm wrong, I understand that the board is actually scheduled to vote on this within the next month or two.
Next board meeting would be in May.
In May, yeah, I think Grace said on our call, it was gonna be public comment in March, April was going to be some of the committees to come back and review this, and then it was then, yeah, the next month was gonna be the board. So obviously, time is of the essence, we get this out, so that the other counties can likewise have comment, and hopefully, hopefully hauled off approving what they've got without a major redraft. And it's more than just the job hubs, obviously.
It is.
There's a whole lot more to this that is a problem. I mean, even those with the rural transit, we have some concerns with their transit portions of it.
Maybe we should copy our letter to all the commissioners of the other four counties.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I was gonna ask if it would be acceptable, we would like to send it, yeah, we'd like to, you know, send it to our counterparts in those counties. I was hoping Denise and Andy could, and the commissioners as well.
Well, it's not just, remember, we also have the county engineers of each of those, and then they have more board members that involve municipalities. I think we needed, every board member that is outside, every board member ought to actually receive a copy of this, even the ones in Cuyahoga County, 'cause I have a feeling there's some that within Cuyahoga County likewise have some concerns about this.
I mean, when you look at the job hubs, the job hubs are very centric to, I don't know, five or six different areas, even in Cuyahoga County, so it's pulling population and creating the same issue that we have-
Oh, exactly right.
-within the county of Cuyahoga.
Yeah.
So, so one thing that I would like to see, Kathy, is that everybody sign it.
Okay, you want individual signatures? Fabulous.
We list the three commissioners, we can sign it, Denise can sign it, Andy can sign it, and you or Bethany or both can sign it.
And we've got other board members from Medina County likewise, we have-
Jeff Brandon and-
Jeff Brandon, township, then we have municipalities, Pat, and who's the other? Who represents the municipalities other than Tom?
They flip back and forth between Wadsworth and Medina.
Okay, got it, okay, so including some signature for that, show them that we are unified in our concerns.
Terrific, that will be our plan then, to get it out to the rest of the board members from Medina County first, get all the signatures collected, and then share it around the region.
Excellent.
Terrific. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anything else? Anybody else? Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, move to adjourn.
Second.
Call please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, we'll see you all next week.